So which of these, we'll start down there with Leonard. Which of these things are you willing to cut back on, sell or otherwise?
You know, I'm not the city manager because he does the finances with his staff. You know, but I can just tell you this. The Rialto, I can remember when I was 10 years old. We had The Princess and The Mole Theater. They had three of them. My father worked and cleaned them up, okay? We had John Henniotta's stores down there, Wilson's, the White store. Am I bringing back memories to the older people that's here?
The younger people, I'm sure don't want to put out memory later.
Okay, but I had to bring them down there. But the Rialto, they don't have any minorities on their board. I have a problem with that. Because Joliet is a big melting pot of Hispanic, Black and White. So I would cut the Rialto, the scoreboard, no $350,000. That's ludicrous. It's ludicrous. We can put that somewhere else where it's needed in the community. I'm sorry, but the Rialto and others, the scoreboard had to go.
Let me just say this right quick. I'm a board member for KB, who's founding board member. I go to all board meetings. I don't go to the staff meetings, the coaches' meetings and things of that nature. Just to clarify that. And I've been a board member for three years. Mr. Thompson came the first year at Salvation Army. Haven't seen him coaching since. And I would, back to the scoreboard first. We ran a risk of paying more than $400,000 either in a lawsuit or in the slammers losing revenue from advertising. We ran a serious risk. The current scoreboard was supposed to last for 10 years. We got two extra years out of that. Granted, poor planning on behalf of the council now and the council before me. If I was, if we, if they came to the council today to want to build a baseball stadium, I would not have supported that in 2006 if it had been today. But we have it now and we have to, first of all, meet our contractual obligation. I would look at personnel, which is one of our biggest expenses in the city. I hate to lay someone off, but before I raise taxes, we have to look at that.
I think that when you look at the $172 million, it's a $172 million budget that the city has. Forty-four percent of it is city workers and another 33% is their benefits, health and welfare pensions. Together, that totals 78%, which is about 80% of the 172 million. So just to break it all down for you, you're talking about $120 million, $130 million is their salaries. Something that I think that we need to take a look at is if we fix the initial problem, I don't think we'll be paying so much overtime costs. How much of that is overtime? I think first thing we need to do is look at the base salary of what we're paying these people and then how much of that, the base, how much of that other is actually overtime monies? Fixing water main breaks at midnight, okay? If we would fix the water mains, we wouldn't have to pay overtime to people, okay? So that's one thing. The other thing is, is that you have to find creative ways. It doesn't always take cutting something when you can create money. What if the city were to take some of the vacant lots that are around and we have an Evergreen situation, start building houses and selling them? That could be income, more income to the city. So it's not always cutting, you can also generate.
I think, I would like to, I think, address that question of the tax increase. And I know that nobody wants a tax increase. But I think your second part of that will be what services would we cut? And we would have to look at consolidating some of these services. Mr. Foster is absolutely right in terms, I'm sorry, not Mr. Foster. Mr. Morris is absolutely right. I would look at personnel and start to cut from there. Not wanting to lay anybody off, but everybody has to tighten the belt. This budget is just like your household budget. If you don't have the revenue coming in, you can't make those expenses going out. And certainly, we think that, we know that infrastructure needs to be repaired. Overtime services will, can be cut down if we pay attention to the main problems that we have in terms of our infrastructure. We certainly need the public utilities and the public safety. And so those would be the last two places that I would look at. But we would certainly make sure that these extra fluffy services, going back through that budget, looking at those fluff pieces, would have to be removed.
I feel one thing that we can cut is all the money that we give to the Rialto Square Theater. Now, as much as I love the Rialto Square Theater, I feel it's ludicrous that we're giving them nearly a million dollars every year. We have a very similar theater that we can look at. I believe it's the Paramount Theater in Aurora. Very similar theater, very similar city, and they're able to get it done without getting nearly a million dollars from the city. So I feel that I would like to cut that money and help the Rialto become successful. They should not be putting on like 40 shows a year when they could put on over 120. Besides, one area that I feel like we can save money.
Let's talk a little bit about jobs. That's a, that's a, certainly a critical issue for people that live in Joliet. It's a critical issue around the country. What economic development, of course, brings jobs? We've been reasonably successful in the retail area. I'm not bringing jobs to the community, but those jobs aren't real high paying, as a general rule. So what plans do you have for, not only your district, but for businesses to Joliet that have jobs? We're not, I'm not talking about warehouse jobs. I'm not talking about the poverty level wages that some of these jobs actually, actually pay. I don't think that's a bad thing. It's a necessary thing. Not everybody can make about 50 bucks an hour. But what are you going to do to bring quality jobs? And when I say quality, I define that as something 20 bucks or more an hour. What are you going to do? What are your plans? What is, what is your vision to bring those kinds of jobs to Joliet?
The vision that I have as far as bringing more jobs in the city of Joliet is we need to let these job creators know, large and small, why Joliet works for them. We're the fourth largest city in the state of Illinois, largest city in all county. We have easy access on I-55, I-80, many state routes. We have Metro, we have Amtrak. I have a background in marketing, so I want to let all these job creators know why Joliet works for them. I fully intend on reaching out to Fortune 500 companies and letting them know why Joliet is the best, is the best place for them to invest.
I certainly agree, Angel. I think that we can market Joliet to be that attractive piece where it would bring good paying jobs into Joliet.
I don't mean to interrupt again, but I do mean to interrupt. How are you going to do that? How? We know that what we need, but how are you going to do that? What are you, what's your vision to get that accomplished?
The marketing of Joliet is a key piece. Making sure that Joliet has the infrastructure to, to support, develop some of this unincorporated land that we have that, that is available using the, the resources to bring people there to see. Make the Silver Cross property, for example, beneficial to District Four. And doing that, we're going to have to make sure that we are able to go out and show Joliet is the place to bring your business. And make sure that Joliet stands out above everything else. Angel said it perfectly. We have, we are in perfect access, 80, 55, all of that. And so we have to make this attractive to the, to well-paying jobs, economic development pieces. We have to make sure that we can market Joliet that will bring these good paying businesses in.
I think first of all, being self-employed, I don't get a paycheck every week, so I have to go out and hustle to kind of look for, target certain people. I have that expertise with bidding jobs, managing projects. Something I'd like to say is that I wouldn't, I wouldn't start off by bringing in a bulldozer and digging holes and foundations. I would go to the company that's already in my area. I go to CNN Railroad and I'd say, hey, we have, we have a need in our district. We need you to hire or start maybe an apprenticeship program or internship for residents in our district. I do that at Silver Cross. I would do that at all the major corporations in Joliet, first of all, to seek out employment opportunities for people in my district. Just to bring, shed some light on something. We have CNN Railroad in District Four. They shut down Woodruff Road. It was a $2 million project some years back. There's tankers in there that can kill people if it, if it was breached. And the Forest Park Community Center received $100,000. They're getting $30,000 for three years when there was an opportunity to bring jobs to the neighborhood right there with the company.
Yeah, Wayne, I think, I believe that we really need to aggressively go out. And what I mean by go out, I mean go out of state. A friend of mine was the economic director in Aurora. And he went to Las Vegas for five years before he landed the Outlet Mall on Interstate 88. Five years going back to Vegas, talking to developers, talking with corporations. And I just believe that the city of Joliet needs to really get aggressive in the business of bringing major corporations here. But I, I do know from talking with him and others that it's a community effort. You know, the corporations don't want to come here. I mean, we could go sit at their office every day, but unless the community fits their, their ideal of workers, schools and things of that nature. So the schools have to play a part, the park district have to play a part. We just gave them $20 million and no one is having fun for them.
First of all, I worked with the workforce services of Joliet. I was a business service rep. I went to a lot of companies and found out what was the reason why you wouldn't come in a district like mine, District Five. Well, if you've got garbage everywhere, you, I mean, it's all messed up. Michael's Warehouse, I'll give you a prime example. I helped open that up when it was in New Lenox. I have vast experience of five years dealing with these companies in Cromwellville. A lot of people didn't pass the drug test, first of all. Listen, I'm being real with that. This is the problem that we had. So when the companies hear that a lot of people in, I'm going to say my district, District Five, they're not passing the drug test. We needed a lot of welders. Well, there's no training for welders, for minorities.
Ten seconds.
So I have the experience in bringing the jobs and going to sell Joliet, but you have to sell it in a way that you know how. Thank you.
Evergreen Terrace is going to cost $50 million already. It's established there. How do you want to see it redeveloped? Start down there with Leonard. How do you want to see it redeveloped? And what I, the question is, do, do we, to make it less dense, we're going to have to demolish some of those structures and re, and redevelop within so it's not so dense. What's your vision to, is it to keep the same scattered site housing? What, what, what do you want to see out?
Well, that's been there for a lot of years, Wayne. We have to do something with that. First of all, again, you have a big game problem. We can try to say that it's not a problem, but it is first and foremost in that area also. But it needs to be dealt with. It needs to reconfigure somewhere. I don't know if the city should take it over. I'm, I'm, I'm really lost between it. I think the federal government.
You're too tired to say it. Excuse me, time to say it. What do you want to say? What do you want to say? If you're going to be on the council, what are you going to do?
I couldn't hear you, Wayne. What'd you say?
If you're going to be on the council, what are you going to do?
I'm going to definitely look at the budget, work with the other council members and find out what's the, what's the best course. Because it has to be dealt with at this time. This has been too long. Evergreen Terrace has been up there. It's been a lot of shootings there. We need to do something to make it look more nicer for them. We know it's going to cost money, but where are we going to get the money from? We're paying for everything. So you've got to have four eggs in one basket. So we've got to do something to make it look very nice and bring nice residents in that really want to keep it quiet.
Thea, I believe, you know, we have, a few years ago, a couple of years ago, we hired one of the leading management developers in the country, in the hosting group. They worked in Chicago with Cabrini-Green, which I live in Chicago, because I'm not born here. I was born in Chicago. And it's far worse than whatever Evergreen Terrace would ever be. Not that that's good or bad, you know? Not that it's a good thing. But anyway, Hosting Group is going to come to the city council, to the city. They've already reached out to the residents and going to continue to reach out to the residents. I believe that we're going to probably end up doing a bond to get the money to pay for it. And I believe, and this is without seeing all the figures yet, that the revenue from HUD will help pay that bond back where it wouldn't cost the taxpayers any additional money, but it is going to enhance our city for those businesses to want to move here. When we redevelop that area, the city, our residents that live around there and most important, the residents that live there now, they will have better living conditions, I believe. You know, whether it's there or on other sites in Joliet.
Since you bring that up, if, if it's made less dense, what will happen? Where will those individuals go?
Well, I would like to see the city as, as, as city councilman Foster. I'm speaking pathetic here. But as Mr. Foster says, that we need to start building properties now. You know, for the last three, maybe four years, the city staff has been talking about these lots that we've had. We need to just start developing those lots as well as some other areas in the city or the surrounding area.
Well, when's that going to start?
Well, I would like to see it started yesterday. I really would. And I've made that known, but again, we're waiting on Hosting Group to get into Evergreen Terrace to see how much development can be done, where, how many can stay there and, or, you know, or how many sites off, off of that site we would need. But I think that would enhance the, the view of the city globally.
I'm going to let you come on down and give your colleagues here an opportunity to answer that question, but I'm going to come back to it.
Sure.
First of all, I'd just remind everyone that I'm from the Forest Park area. And up there, they tore down the housing projects, housing projects, and replaced it with Liberty Metals, which is beautiful. But you know what? Zero of the project residents returned. They're displaced. They're down south in other towns and in other cities. And I just don't believe in promoting tearing down buildings where residents and have family structure in the city of Joliet have to relocate miles and miles to other cities and just disturbs the entire family structure. Second of all, the plan for the houses have been in effect way since 2007 and 2009. With the Quality of Life Study, I'm familiar even that the Forest Park Community Center owns land that could, that is able to be built on with housing. And being a community organization, I think that they should have made some type of efforts before it came to this. You're talking about Evergreen that has 350 units. If there's six buildings there or five buildings there, you're talking about 75 buildings in each, in each unit. There's enough vacant foreclosed houses in the city of Joliet to provide housing to these residents so that they can remain locally. So that's what I would do with Evergreen. Insofar as this Hosting Group and all that in Chicago, nobody has a plan. Nobody knows what they're doing. You're $7.5 million into this thing with legal fees and nobody has a plan. We have budgets and things that are supposed to have things planned out. We're going to be halfway through the year and still remanding a budget that was submitted six months prior to. So someone has to have a little bit more foresight on all of these given situations so we don't keep having to reinvent the wheel.
I certainly believe with the question about Evergreen Terrace that we cannot continue to warehouse people in that manner. Ever, that model does not work. I'm sorry, did you say someone?
That might pass the purchase.
So what, what, I see Pastor Purchase is going out. But anyway, we cannot warehouse people in that manner. It does not work. It does not create the quality of life. I certainly hope that the city retains the, the property at Evergreen Terrace and we lower the density. Lowering the density does not mean that the residents have to leave the city of Joliet. I believe that we can supply adequate housing stock, affordable housing stock for the families where they do not have to leave. The only way they would leave the city on their own accord. I believe that with the lots that are available, the housing stock that the city has already put together that is available, that we can make these changes and make them work. And in terms of Mr. Foster and, and talking about the...
Ten seconds.
And, and in terms of Mr. Foster and talking about the lots and the houses, Forest Park has built houses and will continue to do that. We own property there, we certainly will. And our thing is to make that community and make all communities stronger. Even when he talks about his, his successfulness in his business, we, we know that that is not all true. So we will have to do that fact checking on your own. But we have been able to make strides in the community. We have been able to create jobs in that community and we will continue to do that.
Evergreen Terrace is a very emotional subject for me because I can't help but to think there's a lot of families that live there and a lot of families that do live in there. They feel unsafe. And there's no reason that someone raising a family should feel unsafe. I feel they should tear it down. And I feel that property, they should build single-family homes and have rivers for retail. But I want to make sure that everyone living there has a place to stay. We cannot just kick people out coldly. So I do feel they should tear it down and make sure everyone has a place to stay.
Okay, Wayne, we're going to, we have one more question. And then I'd like to turn it over to the audience. Anybody who, start thinking about, if you haven't started thinking about your question, start thinking. And if you come up to the podium to ask it, we'll see what kind of response we get. The last, last question that I want to hit on is the, the idea of redistricting. There was a, this, this last year, an attempt to put on the ballot to eliminating the three at-large and creating three new districts so that there would be eight districts in the city. What, what's your stance on that idea? Do you think it's a good idea? Do you think it's a bad idea and why? Start with you, Angel.
I think it's a great idea. I don't really care for the at-large because I feel that they're, mostly councilmen live on the west side. So I know especially a lot of residents east of the river feel misrepresented. So I'm strongly in favor of that. However, I know that a lot of people like the at-large. So I feel that there should be a compromise. And this compromise hasn't flowed around. I feel that we should phase out one councilman at-large and have, have two councilmen at-large. One west of the river and one east of the river.
I certainly do not agree with the eight districting. And this is why. Because of the way that the city's structure is now, if we were to expand to eight districts, that means if I or my, or either one of my colleagues, whomever would be on the seat, if they're missing, we don't get that opportunity to have that coverage. Right now, we have three at-large that can go into any district. And if, say for instance, my district, when my former councilwoman was unable to serve, we had three at-large that covered District Four. Now, it was still able to get a vote. We were still able to get the services. So if we go to the eight districts, we will not be able to have that. We would have one at-large and that would be the mayor. Would be the at-large person. So I certainly do not agree. Nobody has shown me a different way than expanding out to eight districts. Now, certainly, the at-larges, people must know that you may run for at-large anywhere you live. So the at-larges don't, do not have to be concentrated in one area. Any resident can be able to run for an at-large seat wherever you live.
Yes, I would be in favor of splitting it up. And one reason why, and I understand that the at-larges are citywide, but it's a proven fact that a person of a certain nationality gets along, or I ain't going to say gets, I'm not going to say gets along, but understands the ethnic background and what's needed for different areas. The east side of Joliet, the whole population of Joliet now at 150,000, with 50% making up Black and minority. And only having one councilman on that side to cover all of that territory in District Four, I'm speaking of specifically, which takes in Galga Road, Ruby Street, the Hispanic area in the Collins Street corridor, the Parkwood area in the hill. That's a lot for one councilman. So I would be in favor of supporting the, the more districts. Thank you.
You know what? Yes, I've given this a lot of thought, but having the council at-large for so long is, I know it's hard to change. But I could support going to, as Angel said, going to two councils at-large and adding one district. I would probably support that wholeheartedly. My only thing with the eight districts was, you know, I would like to see it on the ballot, but I don't think it's a council decision to put it on the ballot. I think the residents should do, go referendum, put it on the ballot and let the chips fall where they may. And if it's a situation, as Angel stated, with two at-large, one from the west, one from the east, and add a district and we look at the map, I would support that.
I'm for eight districts. District Five is the biggest district in the city of Joliet. I wish I had the map here so you can see it. It runs all the way out to Fobo Road, Frontage Road, most of the west side.
Sure do.
And like, like Pastor said, yes, it does. So I'm in favor of that. One, one councilman cannot do District Five. It's impossible. So eight is what I'm with. I'm, I'm, I'll vote for that anytime they bring it upon me. And I think we should have it.
Very good. Some questions from the audience. If you feel free to come up to the podium. Questions? There's got to be some questions out there that we didn't touch on. We haven't talked much about crime. We haven't talked much about recent murders.
My question is for Mrs. Gavin. You were appointed to the city council by Mayor Gironi. And he would not have appointed you unless he was fairly certain that you would support his public, his public safety initiative. So I just wonder after looking and reviewing the mayor's first term, because I think it'd give us some insight into your thinking, what grade would you give the mayor in terms of public safety?
We need to mic back.
Yeah. Does this one work?
Does this one, this one does work?
We're doing, this is for the audience.
Oh, okay. All right. First, you know what? It took a lot of courage for the mayor to appoint me. Especially when I have worked with the mayor and we have not seen eye to eye on a lot of things. And so I'm an individual thinker. I'm an independent thinker. So here, to answer your question, how would I grade the mayor?
Yeah, A, A to F.
On public safety?
Yes.
That was your question?
I mean, because as the gentleman said, you know, crime and I see the gangs have been mentioned a few times. And so I think it would give us some insight into, you know, how you view things because he's going to expect you to vote with him. He wouldn't have appointed you otherwise. He's not going to vote, he's not going to appoint someone who would vote against him.
Oh, trust me. The mayor, the mayor does not know me.
I understand what you're saying, but I know the mayor.
Yeah. Well, I tell you, I know the mayor too. And it took a lot of courage for him to appoint me because the mayor and I have bumped heads on a lot of things. But in terms of public service, public safety, our current rates are, are down lower now than in two thousand and ten. So, in looking at that, and looking at where we laid off public safety...